Roll call.
Larry.
Here.
Tommy.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Gene.
Here.
Don.
Here.
Arthur.
Here.
Please stand for pledge of allegiance. Moving down item number four, approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Moving to number five, approval of city council meeting minutes from January 2nd, 2019.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Or second it then.
Thank you. Roll call.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Item number six, comments from citizens. If we have anybody who'd like to comment, please step forward to the podium. Give your name and address, please. Seeing none, moving on down to item number seven, approval by city council members to waive the three reading rule for all ordinances on the agenda.
Make a motion.
Second it.
Roll call.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Moving down to item number eight, A, old business, ordinance amending chapter thirty, city council and city officials meetings. Uh, council, this is, uh, the discussion we had at the Cal meeting as far as what changes that you want to made to title three. Uh, Mr. Eichmann has reviewed them and made the changes that were requested. So, Mr. Eichmann?
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash zero two blank, city of Tintown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance amending a portion of chapter thirty, city council and city officials of the Tintown Municipal Code, of the city council meetings of the city of Tintown.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second it.
Thank you, sir. Discussion? Roll call.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Item number nine, A. Whoops, there is emergency clause. I apologize.
Motion accept emergency clause.
Thank you, sir.
Second it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Now then, moving down to number nine, A, this is an ordinance amending chapter fifty-two, section fifty-two point one one five of the sewer rates regulations. Mr. Eichmann?
Ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash zero two blank, city of Tintown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance amending section fifty-two point one fifteen, establishment of rates of chapter fifty-two sewer regulations of the Tintown Municipal Code in its entirety of the city of Tintown and declaring emergency.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Henry. Discussion? Roll call.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Down to item number nine, whoops, emergency clause. I keep forgetting it. I apologize.
Motion accept emergency clause.
Second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Now then, moving down to item number nine, B, approval to purchase new police department vehicles. Uh, Mr. McCormick?
Again, this is just bringing up the one car that they have up there, um, giving me approval to purchase it. Um, total price is gonna be right around or a little less than twenty-five thousand dollars, give or take a few. I haven't got the complete invoice on it. Um, shouldn't be any much changes from what you saw at the last meeting.
Have a motion to approve. Thank you. Thank you.
Who's that? Gene?
Gene. Any discussion? Roll call.
Larry.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Nine C, approval by the mayor, uh, for the Tintown Historical Museum Board members, Bev Cordiani and Heather Renali-Pichi to serve another three-year term on the museum board.
Open to approve.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Nine D, this is resolution to approve the amended final, uh, two thousand eighteen budget, uh, that Pat brought forwarded, brought forward to you, um, at last council or Cal meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Down to item number nine, E, approval by the mayor for, uh, planning board members Rocky Clinton and Ken Boorts to serve another two-year term on our planning board. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second it.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I wanna, I'd like to back up to one of our, we just done a minute ago, if you don't mind. Do you get a chance? If you wanna keep rolling, just stop for a minute.
Will it require any kind of motion by you or any change by you?
It might. I'd like to go over to back to discussion for a second.
Which item is that, sir? We've had about eight of them.
Yeah, the, uh, yeah, chapter thirty.
Me think. Okay.
If you're ready to go there.
Go, go ahead, sir.
Previously, if I remember right, we had in there that if you missed a meeting, we were allowed to miss one committee's whole meeting and one city council meeting.
I thought we removed that, did we not?
I think it's taken out now.
It's taken out now. So if you missed a meeting, you're just.
You're fine.
You just missed a meeting.
You just missed a meeting. Was that not what you guys wanted?
Well, that's right. But it's not the way it says.
What number is it?
Thirty point oh two, compensation. They just say you show up for the meeting, you get paid.
Right, and I think before it addressed that if you missed a meeting, you'd be deducted. And I'm wondering about what you want.
Before if you missed a meeting, you, you, it was okay. You could miss one meeting a year.
Right.
Still get paid. Think it was a committee meeting and a, and a city council meeting, and we talked about it the other night, just about, just done away with it, and because we're elected officials, you're supposed to be there, so. But this thing here says if you're here for the meeting, you get paid, and if you don't, you don't, so.
Didn't say that.
Let me see. Let me read it aloud so everybody can hear it. Thirty point oh two compensation, C, each council member shall receive three hundred per meeting, which I think it's.
Each council meeting.
As a compensation for attending a regular council meeting, each council member shall receive a hundred per committee of the whole meeting as compensation for their attendance. Um, each special meeting that council member attends, they shall receive fifty dollars in compensation, which I thought we took that out too, but if a special meeting is scheduled on the same day and time as a regular meeting or a committee of the whole meeting, the compensation fee for special meetings shall not be provided.
That's the way we, we talk about it.
That takes care of your fifty dollar meeting then, ain't it?
Right.
If we have one on a regular day, it's, we don't.
You don't get paid for that.
But if we happen to have one on a Wednesday or Thursday, we do.
But, and then, I think what Mr. Granata is saying, that it's saying if you attend the meeting, you get paid three hundred, so therefore if you didn't attend the meeting, you won't get paid the three hundred, is what you're saying. Mr. Eichmann?
That would be my reading of it, if that requires attendance. Is that not what?
I'd like to open it back up, if you don't mind, and at least, at least put it to like it was.
I, I think what.
Previous, or.
I think what it was before, prior to us implementing that deduction of pay, you got paid regardless, right?
Right, for, you could miss one meeting.
You receive paid.
One, I think you missed one ki- city council meeting.
One.
Committee and the whole meeting. You still get paid. The way this says, you snooze, you lose.
I tend to agree with you. So.
I thought, the other day when we were talking, I thought we just gonna, just do away with it, period. You got, that's what you got paid.
Right.
Period. But now, that's not what it says.
So how about this? Uh, we've, we've passed it with a motion. There's nothing that says we can't amend this at the, the next meeting. Everybody's here for this meeting. Is anybody gonna miss the Cal meeting? No? Okay, so you're not gonna get fined or deducted for this meeting or the Cal meeting, as long as you don't miss the Cal meeting next month, so it's gonna be mandatory that you attend that meeting, but we will revise this ordinance at the next council meeting. Is that fair enough to you, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sounds good.
All right. And just to make sure Mr. Eichmann is spot on on this, what you're saying is that you don't want, whether you miss one or you miss twenty meetings, you're still gonna get paid every month.
Well, that's, that's why, that's why we talked about a committee at home meeting.
Just making sure he's clear on what he drafts. Is that fair by you?
Yes.
Okay. You good, sir?
That is, yeah, I think I do. And, and was there another confusion with regard to the fif- the special meeting?
No.
I hear you, okay.
The way, the way it reads now is, I think, the way it, we talked about it before.
So it's just a, e- e- essentially what I'm gonna do, I think, is take out the attending, and is this gonna be, uh, per, per meeting? Does that sound right?
Go on, turn.
Tommy. Basically, the, the, the attending requirement is gonna be, gonna be out, this is gonna be a per meeting type.
Right.
Okay.
All right, we're all good? Moving down to nine F, approval of Pendergraph fence, uh, variance request. Um, Mr. Pendergraph, uh, owns a piece of rental property on Piazza. Um, he has requested, uh, for the tenant that lives there to construct, um, a fence going, I think James is going across the front of the property, is what I understand. Or is it the side?
Yes, the request is for, to allow a privacy fence across the front of the property that's actually behind, uh, Mr. Pendergraph's property. If that helped.
I think so. Anyway, the planning board unanimously approved this. Um, no complaints by any citizens regarding such fence, so they're passing it along to the council for approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tommy.
Yes.
Henry.
Yeah.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Moving down to nine G, ordinance amending, uh, chapter ninety streets and sidewalks, section ninety point four zero zero point four, crossing sections and R point O W. Uh, this was brought before us by Ms. Courtney Minaire. Um, essentially she had some typos, um, in the previous ordinance amount of that, so she cleaned up those typos, is what she has done.
Go ahead and read it, ma'am.
Yes, sorry.
Yes, okay. Uh, city of Tintown, Washington County, Arkansas, an ordinance amending section ninety point four hundred point four, cross-sections and rightaways whis of chapter ninety streets and sidewalks of the Tintown Municipal Code in order to clarify development and subdivision regulations for the city of Tintown and declaring emergency.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Henry.
Yeah.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
Emergency clause. I was fixing to spit it out, boys. I, I had it on the third go-around.
Make a motion to approve the emergency clause.
Second that.
Thank you. Thank you. Roll call.
Henry.
Yes.
Gene.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Larry.
Yes.
Arthur.
Yes.
Tommy.
Yes.
I haven't wrote down here, emergency. Moving on to item number ten, comments from our alderman. I'll start with Mr. McCartney.
None tonight.
Mr. Dodna.
Dude, what was, what was that last deal we just did? The fence variance?
No, we did, uh, ordinance amending chapter ninety streets and sidewalks.
I had no comments. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Granata.
Nothing, sir. Keep going.
Mr. Penzo.
Huh? Me?
Yeah.
Mr. Penzo, then.
Think we're doing fine, fellas.
Thank you. Mr. Aldermoney.
Good job on Water Tower.
Coming along, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
See that?
Moving down to, uh, number eleven.
We could plug in, show it on the TV.
Well, you'll be able to see that, I'll guarantee you.
And the, uh, line contractor on our part started today, made his first step, so that'll be going, and then the water line, I, you ahead of schedule, behind of schedule, or between schedule? Let's say on schedule. All right.
All right, moving down, comments from the mayor. Exactly what I was fixing to talk about. If you hadn't driven down, uh, highway four twelve and looked to the north, and you haven't seen the Water Tower project, that's coming along just fine. Uh, very, very appreciative of the government, government reopening. Um, it's enabled us to, uh, pay our contractors, so we're tickled about that. Uh, we pray that, um, some common sense falls upon our, our federal government to keep the government open in the next ten days, uh, and for the rest of this year, so we can continue, uh, making sure we make our payments on time and getting that project finished. Uh, water line construction is going at its normal pace, if you will. Um, you know, they're kinda in the section right now of dealing with a lot of, a lot of gas lines and phone lines and utilities everywhere around them. Uh, we kinda feel like once they break past that point, then they're probably gonna pick up speed in what they're doing. Uh, question was asked earlier, you know, are we gonna fill the water tank with, uh, Springdale water, uh, or are we gonna fill it with new water? Uh, my impression of it is that they will kind of go online at the same time, um, being that we've made the commitment to basically not deactivate our lines from Springdale, but change the valving in it and not put some lines in that we were gonna have to put in, uh, for this tank, so Mr. Gales could probably answer that better than I, but I think it will go online at the same time with two-ton water.
Whatever you desire, uh, or is the changeover, the final agreement is, once we get ready to use two-ton water, they'll just go shut the valves. And, uh, and we're not making any changes over that spray thing.
Right. Uh, we're still working on commitments with Springdale to, um, to set up emergency access from both sides. Um, I don't know that anything has been brought forward by, uh, Springdale's attorneys as of yet. Do you know, James? Okay. Well, we're still in the progress, uh, stages of working on that, uh, so hopefully we'll get it done within the next few months. Um, you know, things are, are still popping in the city and, and new subdivisions are, are going in and more houses are being built. Uh, matter of fact, Courtney, uh, told me just this last week. I think that we had twenty-eight building or housing permits issued in January versus fourteen last year at the same time, so, um, it's shaping up, I think, to be another year of building in Tintown. Uh, still having lots of people contact us about different areas of town to possibly do some commercial stuff. We've met with, uh, a few uh, commercial people that have asked and required of, of our ordinances and, and what all we require for them to put their businesses in Tintown, as well as, uh, some more developers that are looking at different options for our city. Um, you know, our, our, our planning board has been very active in working with these folks. Um, I attended a meeting with Northwest Regional Planning, um, a couple of weeks ago about the new, um, highway project uh, that's coming soon to Northwest Arkansas, specifically highway four twelve and one twelve. Um, so they're gearing up to start doing something at that intersection probably sooner than later. Um, they are still in the process of working towards all the easements for the new six twelve that goes out past Tintown. Um, also met, uh, with the ambulance, uh, board, uh, two weeks ago as well. Um, everything seems to be going fine with them. Um, they're not anticipating any rate increases, uh, for any of the cities or the county, uh, with, um, their ambulance crews. Uh, they are anticipating doing a rate increase for the customer. Uh, and then we're looking at other options with the ambulance forty, authority, because I sit as vice chair on that committee, uh, possibly, um, tweaking some of the things that they're currently doing to try to save some money down there so that they don't have to raise rates immediately, but, you know, to, to be quite honest with you, they are being stretched thinner and thinner every day with the population increase here in Northwest Arkansas. Uh, it wouldn't surprise me that next year at this time, if they don't come back and ask for some kind of minimal raise, um, I mean, just Tintown, for example, ran over four hundred calls this last year, which is up by quite a bit from the previous year. Um, and all of Northwest Arkansas has, has seen an increase in fire and police and, and ambulance calls that have come in, and it's, it's, it's not a situation that's, that's gonna get better. It's only gonna get worse as our population increases. Um, I had a chance to speak with our, uh, our representative, um, on the JP's board, um, Lance, what's his last name again? Lance Johnson, Mr. Johnson. Um, he came in and visited with me for a couple hours, once again, a couple of weeks ago, um, about the, the police fines or police jail rates that's been discussed. Um, Joey attended a meeting, uh, was it last, two weeks ago on Friday, I think? Is that right? Yeah, um, I, I think or I feel, uh, like we're making some sort of headway, uh, with them, because initially they, they wanna charge us like sixty-two or sixty-three dollars per day, per prisoner, and starting immediately. Um, we fended that off with the help of the other mayors in Tintown, attended the meetings and calling the JP's and calling the judge and, and trying to get some sort of rationale into this deal just a little bit. Uh, one of the suggestions that has been offered, um, is that, um, in, in lieu of paying sixty-two or sixty-three dollars a day, um, that the county look at possibly figuring their, their deficit for a year. In other words, if it started this last October and they run to this year in October and tell us what their deficit is, and then give us a bill in October or September, however, whatever timeline that they're looking at, um, and then ask for us to pay that bill this coming January one, we would all know exactly what the true costs are, that's actually costing the jail or what they're losing by housing the prisoners. And number two, it would allow for all the mayors to calculate that into their budgets for the upcoming year. And number three, we wouldn't have to pay that until that budget time period in the next year, so, um, I know the county's been looking at it pretty hard. I've made several calls and, and bothered the judge about it, um, as well as our JP, um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled that they're at least talking instead of demanding. Uh, so I'm very appreciative, uh, of the new JP's that's been elected and, and on the, on the council down there, uh, because they are taking a harder look at it than just saying, this is what you're gonna do and this is when you're gonna do it, so, uh, much thanks goes out to them. Um, I don't mention this last meeting, but if you hadn't been down Clint's Road, thank you to the county. I appreciate you for all the help and, and working with us on that road, as well as waste management for their participation in it. Um, we couldn't have done that without the help. I mean, I checked with the engineers from the highway department and they were telling me numbers of seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, and I knew we didn't have it. So, uh, from, on behalf of the city of Tintown, I wanna thank Judge Woods and, um, his staff, uh, for allowing the county to come out and participate in that project, so thank you very much. With that being said, um, one more thing, we, uh, have hired a new administrative assistant, uh, Ms. Bybee, and she will be, uh, starting, uh, here in the next week, uh, to take over for Ms. Lori. Uh, so we'll be working in conjunction with her to get her up to speed on everything that we do. Uh, one of the main reasons, uh, for me picking her as the choice of the applicants that, uh, that did apply, which we had several, I think fourteen or eighteen applications for the position. Uh, she has tremendous amount of experience in grants, uh, and that's one area that the city administration, I won't say we were lacking in, because we've, we try to send people to school every year to a grant school over in Tulsa, Oklahoma, in Oklahoma City, to try to help us get more grants. Uh, and then she's got years of experience in writing and administering grants, and that's one of, gonna be one of her projects that she works on to help each one of our department heads to hopefully get us some more grants in the future and to make sure that we're administering them properly, so, um, I look forward to introducing each and every one of you guys to her, uh, when she finally starts, and once again, I appreciate everything that Lori has, has done for me specifically and for the city of Tintown. With that being said, I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
No comments, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Couple items that ventures. One is the radio situation. And that's still out. We're studying, uh, as you know, that that's probably be quite a expenditure to all, the last part of the bond issue that they're talking about, only one, a half-set sales tax. Another, uh, that's a tremendous issue that's coming forward. Of course, the new jail will be coming forward if it gets through our court of court or a bond issue for addition to the new jail. That's a, that's a sales tax. That's a half-set sales tax that will be to vote. Uh, there was, like, like you were speaking about what, there will be an ordinance stating that on this jail fee, that it will initially save four dollars per, per population. But with the clause in it that in September, uh, our, uh, treasurer and our controller will calculate the shortfall, and then that may be a reduction since the fact that we also have a, a half-set millage to the county to offset the cost of it. So there's a lot of things in play here that's probably coming forward this year from the county level for people to vote on, and it will affect all of our populations.
Excellent. Um, I know I spoke to John Luther, uh, with Dems. Uh, we, we talked, oh, I'm gonna guess, three weeks ago about the radio situation. Um, you know, the, the cost to our volunteer departments outside of our cities is where it's really gonna hurt. Um, yes, it's gonna affect the city as well, um, but these volunteer fire departments don't make a lot of money, and for them to make wholesale changes in their radios, I mean, you're looking at some of these radios costing up to four thousand dollars. Um, I also talked to, um, Benton County's Fire Marshal, uh, because they have converted over to this new system, uh, which we can all act like we don't know what's gonna go on, but I do feel like that, uh, Washington County will go with the same system that Benton County is went to. Same that Bentonville and Rogers and Springdale or Fayetteville are going to go to, so it's not rocket science to know that you're gonna go with that system. Um, and I spoke with Joey at length about it too, and you know, our, our biggest issue, and, and please don't think I'm griping here, we just need to know which radio we need to have.
So, there's a committee working on that, and, uh, one of the members of that committee is, uh, Willie. Out at, Willie Living out at, he's a JP now. He's also a fire chief in Lincoln area and, and representing us. We, as the road department, purchased sixteen radios that will work on any system at thirty-two hundred, I mean, thirty-two hundred and fifty dollars or change of some of that nature. I notice you're gonna get a new police car. I encourage you to, to buy this radio. It's about twice as much as a normally would, but then you're there. If you're buying any new equipment, get it where it works with either system.
Well, Mr. Luther told us it would be probably eighteen months to twenty-four months before this is implemented, and obviously, um, I know I, I spoke to the judge about it last year before the elections, and he basically told me that let's wait till after the last. let's wait till after the elections to talk about this again, so I've kinda held off visiting with him, and, and, and bottom line is, we know we're gonna have to switch, we know it's something that's coming, and we just need somebody to make a decision and tell us what we need to try to buy, or, or, I mean, Joey has investigated the radios and found several that are less expensive, that will do the same thing, as long as they will allow us to use them, so.
Allowed to use the, the thing that's in it, and they, when they're talking about Motorola, the warranty on the Motorola is the infrastructure at your tower, at your control panel, and that, that's where that is to get the free service.
Mm-hmm.
When you go buy a radio, if you buy Motorola, you're not gonna get that free service just 'cause you bought Motorola out in, into your, uh, car or into your handheld.
Mm-hmm.
Because the way that, and I, that's not understanding the way the law is written in that, it's for the infrastructure, and I've asked John repeatedly about that. What are the, to buy Motorola, what are you getting?
Right.
And you're getting the service for the high-end items.
Well, like I said, as soon as the powers that be can tell us what we need to go with, the sooner the better would help us.
And we're the same one, you know, I've got eighty-five radios in the road department.
Right.
C and S has got, I don't know how many, that's a big issue, they, they're funny, and you even know where they are with...
Right.
They're the same place in the budget as your little fire departments are, where are they gonna get the money? And what's gonna be included in the bond issue?
Right.
Are we gonna address the entire county, which I understand Benton County did, and that was about five million dollars?
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's, we're working on it.
Some more to come on that one.
Right.
Last but not least, I didn't bring it up, if you'll direct your attention at that exit sign right there, there's a blue dot, and underneath that blue dot is a camera. Um, in case you haven't noticed in the building, uh, we have been discussing and talking with, uh, uh, Mr. Ackman about it, uh, to try to, I don't wanna say get ahead, um, but trying to become more ADA compliant, uh, with allowing folks that have, uh, physical disabilities to see our, our paperwork from our ordinances, uh, to be able to hear our meetings, and even to be able to see our meetings, so one of the options, uh, that was brought up to us, uh, was, uh, instead of trying to rescan everything and redo everything in the city, um, was to go with a camera system, so we started this at our last planning board meeting, matter of fact, you can see yourselves on TV right now. Um, we have opened a YouTube channel, and every one of our meetings are being recorded and posted to our YouTube channel, so if and ever you get a little bored at night, you can pull up your phone and, uh, pull up our YouTube channel and re-watch our council meetings, so that's exactly what that little blue dot is up there with the cameras, so just to let you guys know that you're now being movie stars here in the city of Tontie Town on YouTube, so, anyway, just wanted to let you know. Uh, with nothing else to be talked about, I would accept a motion to adjourn this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you all, appreciate you very much.